This is the beginning of the budget hearings, of which we have a few more scheduled. We are here between six and nine o'clock tonight. We have four departments that we'll discuss tonight. I would like to start by just asking councilors to remember that this is a budget hearing. We're here to ask the departments about their budget and about the numbers that the mayor has put together. It's not a performance evaluation of the departments or the department heads. The first thing we have here is the auditing department, which is page 56. Oh, excuse me, councilors, one other thing. Anytime during the process, any councilor can make a recommendation as to cuts. Those will be recorded by Mr. Saracen, and you'll get those on a daily basis after each meeting. And then, at the very end, when we have our final meeting, that's when we actually make the votes on all the recommended cuts. So we'll start with the auditing department on page 56. It's under Finance and Administration Auditor. Total amount is $278,599. Mr. Saracen, any comment?
Briefly, I'm pleased to state that my deputy, who would have liked to have been here but couldn't make it today, but will be at other meetings, has been a good person that's worked for the department and good for the city. We have a professional staff. We're involved with, you know, all the day-to-day finances. We also have a clerical person who works about 10 hours a week. We're sharing that person with the Health Department. She basically helps input the warrant of the bills that are paid and also reviews receipts, the deposits that are made with the treasurer, and helps with other projects. The expenses are pretty straightforward, as far as it's only $5,400, basically office supplies and travel and also dues and subscriptions to keep our certifications intact. Other than that, we have the outside audit. As you can see, the schools help share in the cost of that. And we also have the actuary services that are provided by an actuary for the OPEB. We've talked about that before. Other benefits, calculations for the liability for health and life insurance. That line item is zero this year because that audit is done every other year. And what we have at N'Sync is we do an actuary. On the off-year, we do it on the retirement system. And then, the following year, we do it with the city on the other liabilities such as health insurance. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Any comments or questions from the councilors? Council Boshman?
I got a question. I'm looking at the auditor, line one.
Yep, yep.
And is that a raised $5,000?
Yes, it is. It represents, per the city ordinance, that was passed a year, year and a half ago. It's a three-and-a-half percent step increase. And that's for the people that are getting steps. In addition to that, there was a 1% that was granted for a cost of living for all members of that group. And let me just say, on everybody, you're going to see a slight increase because there's an extra, there's a leap year next year. So it's 52.4 weeks. So that's another $100,000 on the budget because we have one extra day, citywide. So yes, that is my increase.
So let me ask you, on this longevity too, is that a raise too?
No, that's a payment, that's been all along. That's because I'm the only one getting that because I have over five years of service. I have over 30, so if you, that's where you max out. Add over, you get the $2,067 is a longevity payment.
And you get five or six weeks vacation too?
I get five weeks vacation, yep.
I took the wrong profession. All right.
Any other questions or comments? Council Green?
Just as a follow-up, I would, you know, Mr. Saracen, what is our population in Fitchburg?
It's just on 40,000, I don't know, 500 people, over 40,000.
So, I mean, you and your staff of, what, three or four other people are taking care of 40,000-plus people?
No, it's 2.3 people.
2.3, okay.
And when the state did the review of the city, they did say the per capita cost of the auditing department in Fitchburg was one of the lowest in the state.
One of the lowest?
Yes.
Council Green has the floor?
Oh, sorry.
It's okay.
Sorry, Steve.
That's okay.
Again, my point is, I, you know what I mean, I can certainly understand, you know, a three-and-a-half percent step increase and a 1% COLA. I, you know, I don't have a problem with, you know, your budget or your salary at all because for the amount of people that you're servicing, I think you're doing a great job doing what you do for 40,000-plus people.
Thank you very much.
Council Dean Tally?
The theories of both positions, the city clearly gets at a bargain. And that's not even a testament to performance or anything. It's more about the fact that Fitchburg has $140 million in operating expenses, if you include the enterprise and you include the schools. And we have two people doing essentially all of the finance, most of the finance work for those entities. And $110,000 a year for that kind of a profession, the private sector, I don't even have to say what that would be in the private sector. And I believe those who work in this job, they understand that going in. So I don't have any problem with the salary figure. I think it's, I'm biased because of my profession. I think it's grossly low. Thank you.
Council Joseph?
With the new, the new website, okay, is going to require content input. What, with your clerical work, 10 hours or whatever you say a week, are they going to be able to input what's required from the finance, from the auditors department into that website?
I'm sure. I do it now.
So you put the minutes in there?
Yeah, you see they're all current now. And then I double-check with the IT. They have to approve it. If you look online, you'll see that they're all current.
Okay, so we'll get-
So it's not a problem. Once, once they show us how to do it, and it was difficult, it's about 20 steps, Anna knows, and I, it did take me a while to learn it, but fortunately now I understand it, put the time in, and I could pass it on to anyone else.
Okay, so finance committee agendas and-
And capital improvements are current.
Perfect. And that'll, that'll be delegated to somebody in your staff in the future?
In time. I mean, Jackie could probably do it better than I could, to be honest with you.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
Council Dean Tally?
Sorry, one more question. The clerical support staff you get is 10 hours?
About 10 hours a week.
And is that person principally in the Board of Health?
Yes.
So how does that work operationally or logistically with?
We are able to bring the documents to her, and she can input from her desk.
And is there like a, I don't want to say is there an agreement, but how do you ensure that you get the actual 10 hours of work out of her a week?
For the most part, we get, we get the work product. The work is done every week.
Okay.
And we don't have a problem. And Steve Curry is the director of board. Some weeks, we may need a little more, a little less. He's great to work with.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments regarding the auditor department on page 56? Hearing none, we'll move forward to page 175, Employee Benefits.
The-
Let me give you the number first is, you with me, 175, Dick?
Yes.
Okay. Number that the mayor has allocated is $1,147,193.
No, no, you're going to go over one.
Oh. Oh, that's the versus, I'm sorry.
That's the variance. I guess I could just kind of walk through these, the ones that are substantial differences. The pension, that's our contributory retirement system. That is based on an assessment that is done as per the actuary report and is approved by the retirement board. So that is a required amount. Per the last actuary, the total assessment is going up about $600,000 a year for about 12 years before we are fully funded. There are two other governmental units that are part of the retirement board, just so you know, is the redevelopment authority and the housing authority are also in our Workers' comp, that's pretty well fixed. Unemployment is, covers the unemployment costs for all employees or all people that have been laid off. Most of that relates to the school department. And we are, we do get back on, as far as our net school spending effort with that regards. Health insurance, as we've talked about, the, we had a good, we're having a good year this year where with movement, the population went down, and also we had movement from the Fallon Plan to, and other high-end plans to cheaper plans. So we're projecting a 12.9 expenditure this year, and then we're requesting about 13.3% next year. That is about a three-and-a-half percent on the, on the plans that are currently existing. And I could, I could answer more questions on that if you like. Life insurance, there is a transition going on in that, in that category where we are, we've had to entice people to get onto the plan. The payouts have been almost or more than what has come in for insurance. It's mostly retirees that get that benefit, if you will, because, because of their ages and, but we're trying to entice active, active employees to get into the plan. Although it's going to cost us a little more, it's, it's going to sustain the program for the future. FICA, that's the employee's share, the employer's share of the Medicare contribution that, that we have to make for employees, the 1.45%. Other benefits, that covers sick, I'm sorry, vacation and personal day buybacks for employees. That's, that's a number that's not always easy to calculate because it's based on what people do from year to year. If they elect to either work the, or take the vacation time or personal time, or sell it back. Police and Fire medical bills are the last two lines. That covers, for any job-related or retirees that have a job-related injury, we pay for their medical bills related to that.
Questions or comments from the councilors regarding the employment, employee benefits on page 175? Council Dean Tally?
Thank you. Mrs. Saracen, how is the city going to sustain itself in the future when pension goes up by 600,000 to 700,000 a year?
Well, we have to plan on that, that amount per year. That, and actually, it, it goes out to 2030, 2032. It actually will drop by $20 million when we're fully funded.
Are we not the fifth-worst-funded pension system in the state?
I don't know how, how we are as far as funding. We are at about a $100 million in assets right now. And we had had, we have had good performance. The benefits that employees get, regulated by the state, so someone applies for retirement, you know, we have to pay that out, so.
I would like to propose a recommendation that employee benefits be cut by $253,000.
Is that?
That's, that's, that's that line, employee benefits.
Total line?
Total line. The average balance in all of the accounts combined since 2009 is $1,010,000. And that is 25% of the balance, which means that there is still, 75% of the average balance in the last seven years is still in there. Thank you.
Could, is it 223,000?
253.
253, okay.
Any other questions or comments regarding employee benefits on page 175? We'll move forward to miscellaneous on page 178. Total $777,900. Dick, any comment?
As you can see, the, the variances are minimal. General insurance is going up very, very small amount. Although that is a high number, it, it really ensures the city very well for our property, our vehicles, and especially general liability. One claim that we have is at the senior center this year. The low estimate is, I've heard, between 200, 400, 200 and $400,000 claims, so, and we're covered under that policy. So that was really the only item, other than, I believe there's a gentleman here to speak on Johnny Appleseed Center, which was level-funded at $32,000. And I'd be happy to answer any questions on this, in this area.
Questions or comments from the councilors? Council Dean Tally?
I'd like to make a recommendation that the total miscellaneous line be cut by 23,000.
What was the double the increase in the Disabilities Commission budget?
That was more to round it to $1,000. And actually, they haven't used any money this year, but I think it, I was on that committee for a while, and they, I think it made them feel better that the city was allocating up to $1,000. All it was, was, was making sure that we had enough money in the event they have training or they have a, they have an event where they might need some money.
Okay, so there's really nothing that's incumbent that makes the difference between 200, 177, 550, or 1,000, looking at it?
Right. That, that shows what they actually spent.
Okay.
You know, and we were only budgeting $400, $500. And this way, I think they received this very well. And as I, as I mentioned, they haven't spent anything this year thus far. They may, they could do something between now and the end of the year.
Yeah, and what was the proposed cut? Just sorry.
It's okay.
$23,000.
$23,000. Council Clark?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Dick, can you give me a little explanation of where we are with stabilization right now? I mean, I see a couple of, an empty line there that I'm wondering about.
Right now, actually, we're in good shape. I believe we, we have 5.3 million in that account.
Yeah.
Which is 5% of last year's budget. And now the account is accruing interest because it's so high. We, we're generating over 20,000 a year in investment income through the treasurer's office. So I think what we've done, we're in a good position now. If the budget passes, whatever the amount is, we will, I would assume with the mayor and the council's approval, we will try to add, you know, another 100 or 150,000 to bring it, keep it at 5%. So it's in good shape.
Was there a reason why it was presented this way?
Well, the 150,000 would, would bring it to the 5% of the 108 million.
And the 5% is the target?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Council Dean Tally?
Why is the 5% the target? I know the DOD said it, but I don't really, I, why not go for 10? Why?
I think you, I, I think, I don't know, in the standard, in the industry, I guess, it's a standard, 10%. If you go too high, I mean, then it could be questioned, you know, even taxpayers would say you're, you may be putting too much money in it. But I don't know.
I'm asking because, you're right. I mean, I'm not advocating we just keep putting money in there every year and we never touch it. My concern is, because of our history here, that if we ever speak of touching it, everyone might get a little nervous about that. And then we've got this 5% mark. I agree that we shouldn't go below 5%, but there should be nothing precluding the city from going above 5%. And whatever we're above 5%, let's say we go to 10%. We have 5% of leeway that we can apply to capital purchases, to expenses that we have that are non-recurring. That's what I'm speaking of. Things that we don't have to supply in the budget, we can use for this. So for example, if 5 million is the 5%, and we went to 10 million, we'd have $5 million of wiggle room in there to make some purchases. I think the people will understand that it's good budgeting practice because in the event that we have an emergency or in the event that we have capital needs, we won't have to take out bonds to pay for those needs if we can draw out of that account, keeping in mind we don't go below the 5%. So we're at the 5% now, but I hope and encourage that the city don't rest on its laurels at 5% and maintain that 5%. We should be going well above that, and then whatever excess we have, we apply it. And that, that's just my opinion. I, I agree, we shouldn't go below the 5, but I don't want the city to get complacent that, okay, we're at 5, so we can take it easy now on putting money in there. I mean, we should never stop putting money in there.
Right.
So, thank you.
I would just say that I concur with Council Dean Tally that we want to get well above the 5, and I think that makes it a lot easier for us to then draw from it. When it's at just the 5, everybody's really hesitant to draw any, any money from that to use for a capital project. If we, if we get well above that, then each time you want a capital project, you draw it and draw it back down to the 5, and still have the 5% there in the event of a real disaster or a real financial problem that we need to get some money to deal with it. I would also state that I, for years, have been concerned, although I applaud the mayor in that she's got the stabilization account to the $5 million, I'm not always comfortable with the way we go about it. I would much prefer that the stabilization fund line item each year be the first item that the mayor funds. Her finance team tells her she has X amount of dollars, you take some and you put it into stabilization. Then you spend the rest of the money. Because what happens is, you know, for years and years, I watched them say, well, we'll put money in stabilization with what we've got left over. And there was never anything left over, and that's why there was never anything in the stabilization fund. This mayor is been doing it, but what she does is take the money out of free cash on the other end and put it in, which is good, and we're at the 5 million, but I'd still like to see this line item every year, have some money put into it so that we know, boom, that's going in the stabilization, then we'll deal with all the rest of our financial resources and concerns. Mr. Saracen?
Too briefly, two things. I guess once we get to the 5%, right, it's, it's a goal, so we're there, and then you start looking at other, other needs. And, you know, the OPEB, this net school spending, there's pressure there, the reserve for snow and ice. So there's other, other line items. And the other thing on the stabilization, it's really to keep, sustain a level of service to the, to the public in the event of a problem within the general fund budget, like the 9C cuts was a good example that Calvin gave when we were talking about it amongst ourselves, where we had all of a sudden, the middle of the year, the governor, they were running out of state money, and the governor cut the city by, let's say, 900,000. Then we could put 900,000 into the budget, so you're not laying people off for nine months and then bringing them back. That's where, that's where a good example where that would come into play, as well as capital needs. So that, those were the two items I wanted to bring up.
Any other questions or comments for Mr. Saracen regarding the miscellaneous expenses? Council Boshman?
Maybe you can, maybe the mayor, they can explain it to me. Johnny Appleseed Center, can you tell me how it's really benefiting the city of Fitchburg on this, or is it really benefiting Fitchburg besides Great Wolf?
Can I defer?
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, come forward, please. There you go. Thank you very much. First of all, good evening, everyone. My name is Roy Nasimiento. I'm president, for the record, I'm president of the Johnny Appleseed Trail Association. It's a pleasure to be here. I'm fairly new to my role. It's been about four months. I took over for David McKeon, so it's a great opportunity to be here and to, to have this, this dialogue with you. So in regards to your question, the Johnny Appleseed Trail Association is a nonprofit association focused on really promoting and trying to bring visitors with a little jingle in their pocket to the region or central Massachusetts. The idea being that if we bring people that have a little bit of spending money, they're going to spend their money at our local restaurants, at our local hotels, at our local shops, and that generates jobs and has an economic impact. And the concept behind JADA is that, that this tourism destination marketing should be regional in scope because you're able to leverage resources and you're able to have a better collective effort and a stronger impact. In regards to, in regards to your question about the impact for Fitchburg and for the region, tourism is one of the largest industries in the state. It is a growing industry here in our region. It's been, had been identified as, as an industry that has tremendous potential for jobs, for new tax revenue, as well as for economic impact that can help the residents and businesses in our region, including Fitchburg. There's 900 jobs right now and growing that are related to tourism, directly related to tourism. And the economic impact for tourism for our region, for Fitchburg and some of the surrounding communities, is about $120 million a year in direct economic impact. That's, you know, visitors coming to our area, spending money again in restaurants and shops and museums in the area. So I hope that helped to answer your question.
Not really, to be honest with you. I just want to know the impact in Fitchburg. We don't have a lot of restaurants that I can speak of, that I know of. And for tourism, we only get the Great Wolf, and the people come into Great Wolf. I don't-
Well, perhaps, let's look at Great Wolf and as a suggestion. That's 500 jobs.
Right.
It's about, it's projected to be over $1 million in just rooms' tax revenue this year, so that's a pretty significant jump. So for Fitchburg and for the residents and businesses of Fitchburg, that's a pretty significant economic impact.
Now, let me ask, what does Lemonster give? Does Lemonster give 32,000, too?
Lemonster gives, has traditionally given about 35,000 to support the efforts.
Oh, they do? All right.
Council Kuschfer?
You're a member of the North Central community. Welcome, and, and thank you for efforts through Johnny Appleseed. I guess, well, I agree that, you know, tourism in North Central needs to be regional in its approach and scope. I couldn't agree more that we're all in it together in terms of trying to draw people out to North Central Massachusetts. I guess as a follow-up question on, from Council Boshman, I see that, you know, it looks like there's only three communities that, that pay, you know, from their rooms' tax. I see Fitchburg, Lemonster, and Westminster. And I can't help but notice that, you know, the host city, or the host town of the center itself is Lancaster. What other municipalities contribute? And how do they contribute to the, to further the efforts at Johnny Appleseed?
So that's a very good question. There are three communities that contribute. The city of Lemonster, the city of Fitchburg, and the town of Westminster have traditionally contributed to JADA. And the reason is, is that those are the three communities that have a very meaningful collection of rooms' tax revenue. So the concept behind, behind contributing is that they have the most to benefit from tourism since they're making that investment. And the idea behind this type of tourism and destination marketing is that you want more heads in beds, is the old saying in the industry. So you want more people coming to the community, staying in those hotels, thereby generating more tax revenue, hotel tax revenue for the community. Lancaster, to my knowledge, does not have any hotels. The only other community that, again, to my knowledge, that has a meaningful rooms' tax collection is the, the community of Devens, which is relatively new in terms of their hotels. And we have approached them about participating. We've had some meaningful conversations with their new VP. I'm cautiously optimistic that they will help support our efforts since we are strained in, with some budget cuts that we've had. But they have not confirmed yet whether or not they're going to participate in the next year. So I don't know if that answers your question?
It does. I guess, you know, I do have some concern there where we talk about it being regional in scope, but then there's only, you know, a smaller percentage of the region who's contributing to that scope. And I think it would be helpful to know that, you know, if we're saying- you know, if we're saying we're all in it together, let's be all in together. And it doesn't necessarily have to mean that, you know, some of these small municipalities are magic dollar-for-dollar, Pittsburgh and Lemonster. But, you know, if they're, if they're getting tangible benefits, or they're getting even indirect benefits, it would be nice to know that they're, they're all in, and that they are, they, they see value in us working together. So it'd be nice to see, you know, some of these other neighboring towns, and feel like Gardner is kind of missing from this equation. Do they not have a hotel in Gardner?
They, I'm not sure, to be honest with you. I think they may.
Yeah. So I, I would like to see, I guess, in years ahead, to see some, you know, meaningful, either participation and contribution from these surrounding communities, you know, to show that they do want to be in it together, and that they do want to contribute to regional tourism. Because there are other communities that certainly benefit from tourism in the area, and there certainly is, you know, more to see outside of, you know, I would prefer that they all come to Pittsburgh, but there is more to see in North Central than just those three municipalities. So, I'd like to see them contributing. I guess, beyond that, do you also look at, through the Johnny Appleseed, you know, what more, what more can be done to increase and further tourism throughout the region? And if so, you know, what more do you think can be done in this region in terms of a five-year or 10-year plan?
That's a very good question. So I want to, first of all, back up a second and note that JADA does a lot more than just the visitor's center. And I was remiss, I should also recognize Diane Burnett, who's our visitor's services manager. She's a Pittsburgh resident, does a fantastic job, working with a very small staff managing the visitor's center. And that visitor's center is very important to the region. It gets during the height of tourism season, can get as many as 3,000 visitors, tourists that stop in at that visitor's center, looking for information on where to stay, restaurants, things of that nature. But the visitor's center is our most, is our public face, and is probably the most, most visual, visible sign of what JADA does. But we do an awful lot behind the scenes beyond that. We're very involved in destination marketing, and a lot of our funding from the state goes towards those initiatives, advertising, things like fam tours, which is familiarization tours, it's an industry term, where we'll bring in members of the media, or members of the travel media, that will come out to the area, and we'll give them a tour of some of our communities. We just had a group of travel writers that came out to the area, and we took them to local attractions here in Pittsburgh, and in the region, and the idea is to sell them on, on all the wonderful things that, that North Central has to offer. The idea being that if they write in their travel publication about the area, then that will encourage others to, to visit the area. But beyond that, we do a lot of advertising, cooperative advertising, in publications, travel publications, trying to bring people here. In the business world, trade shows are very important for business development, so we try to participate within the limits of our budget to some of, some of the industry trade shows. So we were at Day Trips and Destinations, which is a big industry trade show. We were at the AAA Travel Show, which is more of a, which is a big travel show, but it's more business to consumer. So we were there promoting, visiting the area to consumers, as well as a host of others. So, our plan is to, we do have a plan in place. We are making a lot of improvements. We are launching, very, within the next two weeks, a new website that will be promoting the area. As you probably are well aware, a lot of travel decisions are made by consumers online. So we've invested in a very robust website that promotes Pittsburgh, and that promotes a lot of attractions and a lot of businesses in the area. And we're investing in, in a lot of outreach to get visitors to actually visit that site, consumers that are interested in visiting the area. We're planning on doing more trade shows, more fam trips, and that type of thing. We have a few other things as well that we have planned to try to bring visitors here, beyond just the visitor's center.
Well, I'm excited and pleasantly surprised to hear, you know, that it sounds like the scope is much larger than, than I had previously believed, and, you know, excited to hear about the new website and that launch. And I realize in the past, you've done an annual publication. Is that still in effect?
Thank you very much. See, I'm new, I forget things. We do do a publication that promotes the area, so we distribute that. We print out quite a few of those copies. Those are distributed at the trade shows, distributed at some of these events, distributed at the visitor's center, as well as mailed to other visitor's centers throughout the state. We're at events such as the Big E, where we get, it's over a million, million visitors from throughout New England that visit there. So we're distributing the guide there, and that's published four times a year, promoting the area. So that's another wonderful benefit of the area. We're also involved in a lot of local, local initiatives. We try to be supportive whenever we can, in helping promote a lot of local festivals. We try to partner with them, promote them at some of these festivals that we're, at some of these trade shows that we're at, as well as on the website. Really try to be a partner whenever we can. I know some of our staff are involved in some, some of the local events. I know Diane is participating in several community projects here, and Matt, who is our marketing and communications specialist as well. So we try to play a supportive role within the limitations of our budget, and try to help out wherever we can.
Great. And this is just my last point. I, in the past, I've realized that other communities, I think Gardner is one of them, who traditionally paid for a full-page ad, and they kind of did a single contribution in exchange for, for, I think, ads. And I know, last year, that was kind of a source of disappointment for, for us, because, you know, we gave 32,000, but we felt like we didn't necessarily, you know, receive that same kind of benefit. And I just wonder if this doesn't present an opportunity with a new economic development director, where you might be able to maybe partner with our economic development director, and see, you know, could it be a full-page, you know, ad in each of the publications, where really that could be in our hands, decide which businesses maybe we can promote, and maybe that helps us, you know, in, in, our targeted approaches to economic development, you know, within Pittsburgh. I won't ask, you know, for the other communities, but I, who contribute, but I think, I think that might be of help in, you know, swaging some, some fears that other communities might get something that we don't.
Can I bring up a point on that, just to clarify? We make the ad for you, full-page ad, every time in the book. Whatever you wish in it is what can go in it. So if somebody wants to tell us what you would like, it's like pulling teeth to get this information. Tell us. You, you tell me. You want 10 businesses, you want them, we'll make it. It's part of what we give to you, is, you know, thank you for what you do do. So, these ads are, go into the book, full-page. You tell us what you want, and we will help you with that. It's no cost to you whatsoever. It's included in what we do. So, it would be our pleasure to help.
So, Councilor, I agree with that. It's our pleasure to help. I don't know the situation that you're talking about, it's before me, but we should have probably put an ad in. So, we certainly want to resolve that. So if there's ever an issue like that again, please feel free to reach out to me. But we are here to, to really promote the area and to help Pittsburgh. So we want to see Pittsburgh thrive. We want more jobs, more tax revenue for the community. That's what the mission of this organization is.
Thank you for your efforts, and good luck in the, in your first year.
Thank you.
Councilor Green.
My question has to do with the outside services and your operating expenses. Is that, is that salary?
Yes. So the, the JADA is managed by the North Central Mass Chamber of Commerce through a contract with the Board of Directors of JADA. So JADA, the employees of JADA are actually employees of the Chamber. So we're the employer of record for JADA. So those are all, that's the, basically the payroll expense for our full-time staff. We have three full-time staff, two in the visitor's center, and a marketing communications specialist. And then we have a number of part-time staff that handle the visitor's center throughout the year, because it is open 362 days a year, 10 hours a day. And, so that's primarily, that's the outside services. There might be some other expenses there as well.
Roughly, I don't know exactly how many part-time employees would that be?
Diane, can you help with that?
Yeah. There's two full-time, myself, and an assistant, and I have three other employees that work part-time to fill the various hours to keep the visitor's center open. We run two shifts a day, so they vary if they work all-day or half-day schedules to maintain and keep it open. We run with one employee, one volunteer.
Okay. I was just going to ask about the number of volunteers that volunteer out at that center. Are incredible.
Yeah, we have volunteers. So that's how we try to cut the payroll, is have one employee, one volunteer ratio.
And, Roy, can you just kind of explain to me the $30,000 increase in advertising? That would be advertising cost, or expense? Where does that lie, $30,000?
The advertising under, oh, I see. Okay. I suspect that is most likely related to the state tourism grant that I alluded to. So we receive some state tourism dollars, and those state dollars have a number of restrictions and regulations. It can only be used for advertising. Very little of it can be used for payroll. It cannot be used for the visitor's center, or the operations of the visitor's center. So, if there was, most of that money has to go towards advertising. Has to go towards advertising that's directly related to destination marketing and tourism. So it has to be, there's a number of other restrictions. Has to be outside a 50-mile radius. So, certain target markets that we have for visitors, to bring them into the area.
Okay. And, again, some of the merchandise that you're purchasing, is that, is that local merchandise made and/or created here in our, in North Central Massachusetts?
That's a good question, and I'm happy to answer that, yes, it is. It's all local products. So, JADA is funded by the state tourism grant that we talked about. Then by law, that has to be matched with private dollars. So we raise private dollars to match all of those advertising projects that we work on with those state dollars. And then, and this is where the, the local dollars from the communities are helpful, because that helps us support the visitor's center, which cannot be funded with state dollars. And then, it doesn't fully cover the costs. So then we have a retail shop there as well, where we sell almost entirely local products. So we have products from Hollis Farms here in, in Pittsburgh, as well as other products from businesses and farms that are local here. So, I don't know. Do you want to add anything, Diane, to that?
We sell local jams, jellies, honey, maple fudge, cookies. I buy from local contractors. So I try to, to buy as much as we can within the region. I buy local books. The Yankee Peddlers, they walk in the door with a book, and it's local, and I'll buy it. So, we try to promote what's within the 26 towns that we do cover. So we have products that aren't from Massachusetts, but they're related to Massachusetts. So, some of the books come from other places, and, you know, things on that idea. But we try very hard to have a good supply of local products. Thank you.
Councilor Caddy.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Something I've always had a problem with, with the Johnny Appleseed Center and the cities that fund it, the cities that don't. It's never seemed fair to me that Pittsburgh sends $32,000 in other cities or towns that don't send any in. And, Councilor Boishman, I think, was starting to get into this question, but, and I know you're new, but has, have you ever thought of, advertising is expensive. You can see that from your line.
Yep.
Why doesn't Pittsburgh businesses get a different rate to advertise than businesses in Gardner, who, whose town or city pays nothing to this? You know, what are we really getting for our dollars? You know, $32,000 is a lot of money to give you, and you're saying that you're gonna, you're giving us back with, with advertising, our civic events, everything, but it doesn't do anything for our businesses. You know, why, why doesn't our business get a better rate when we go down to advertise than, than a city who doesn't pay you?
I'm sorry, Councilor. Could you just clarify better rates in terms of?
Councilor, Kuschmerich was saying earlier that last year, the city of Gardner bought a full-page ad with businesses. And, I don't know what that cost, but I know it didn't cost $32,000. Wouldn't it be a better deal for Pittsburgh if we handed you a check for $32,000, and we got six full-page ads in every book for all our businesses? If, if my business wants to advertise with Johnny Appleseed Center, I go down, and I'm going to pay the same rate that another business from Gardner, who doesn't pay anything, is going to pay. It seems unfair to me, where my city is supporting your, your, your operation.
I can understand that that seems unfair, and I apologize for any experience that you've had in the past.
I didn't have any experience. I'm talking in general terms.
So, so the concept behind this is it's cooperative advertising. So we try to reduce the rates by subsidizing ads. So we might take out an ad in a trade publication promoting, visiting the area, and then we would reach out absolutely and partner with local businesses that could benefit. So we'd reach out to a hotel, or the art museum, or others. So, there is that benefit to the business, because they're most likely a small business. They couldn't afford that ad. So if we take out an ad in, say, the Boston Globe, trying to bring residents of Boston to the area, that have a little jingle in their pocket, and they're going to spend money in the community, then that small business could maybe not afford that ad. But because JADA's getting involved, and again, it's cooperative advertising, so, you know, we're helping to pay for that ad, and then a few other businesses are contributing a little, then we're able to leverage those dollars and, and take out that ad. In terms of the Johnny Appleseed guide that I think you're referring to, you know, I apologize if the city of Pittsburgh didn't get an ad. We should remedy that?
We do.
We do get an ad. I'm saying if a business from Pittsburgh wants to go and get into that booklet, that business is going to pay the same rate as a business from Gardner, whose city doesn't contribute towards the Johnny Appleseed Center. And I'm saying, there should be two rates. The, the three cities that support you, businesses should get a better rate for advertising in that booklet than cities and towns who don't support you. That would seem fair to me.
It, it would. And I, I apologize, Councilor, but I'm fairly new, so I probably have to bring that back to the board and discuss it. It seems like something that we could probably work out, and I have to get a little bit more detail, so.
Sure. Thank you.
Councilor Deanna Tally.
This is a little trial by fire for you. I've been here eight years, and this topic gets more discussion than any other topic in the city. Why, I don't know. And not to disparage my colleagues, but, boy, I wish we could expend just a fraction of the mental capacity we have here on other items than this. This is an expense item. There are items we will be dealing with throughout this entire budget, that are costing the city for the next 35 years, millions of dollars, that because of personalities and emotions, we're not going to do anything about. So, I just want to say to you and your organization, I have no problem with the metrics you guys are using. As long as we're getting something in those booklets, I'm fine with it. And, not to mention the fact, it was explained to us before, that the reason why we pay and other communities don't is because we have the hotel. That is why we contribute. These other cities and towns do not have that tax revenue. So, there might be a compelling case to make, and it's a legitimate case, but, I mean, I just, I just, every year I've said this, I don't know why we spend so much energy on this item. I don't get it. Thank you.
Councilor Joseph.
Just FYI, just sitting here, I wanted to visit Pittsburgh, and I ended up in Pittsburgh, Wisconsin. And when I went tourism for Pittsburgh, it said I could get a tour of Pittsburgh State, but nothing referred me over to the Johnny Appleseed Center. So somehow you have to link, so that if somebody's coming in this area and they want to know what's going on, there should be something that pops up that says Johnny Appleseed Trail Promotes Pittsburgh. Okay? Because there's nothing on there now. So, if, if you're a tourism center, Johnny Appleseed, nobody's going to look up Johnny Appleseed Tour when they want to know what's going on in Pittsburgh tomorrow. They're going to look up Pittsburgh Art Museum or whatever, but nothing on the internet points you, Pittsburgh, to you.
So, Councilor, I want to thank you for that feedback. We are, as I said, investing in a new website that we're launching within the next week or two. And I'm going to go back to the office and make sure that, that when someone does a search, that all, all our SEO is pointing, if someone looks for Pittsburgh, that it gets to our, our new website. So, thank you for that.
Okay. Thanks.
Any other questions and comments regarding miscellaneous expenses on page 178? Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Moving forward to the assessors' office, page 53. You know, I like when we get this bulletin out, just at the old city hall, and I can lug it around.
Good evening, Mr. Wilson.
Good evening. Assessors' office, page 53. Total assessors, 320, 332,783 dollars. Mr. Wilson, any comments?
Yeah, I'd basically just like to start by saying, as you're all aware, the assessors' office is responsible for valuing real estate, personal property, and-
Assessors' Office is responsible for valuing real estate, personal property, and administering the motor vehicle excise tax. And I'm sure you all knew, knew that. But what you may not have noticed is that, 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 that results in us being able to raise $53 million in revenue, which is about one-half of our budget. And if you take the, what we spend to do that, it comes out to less than one-half of one cent for every dollar that we raise. So we're a bargain, is what I'm saying. And if you compare our, our assessing office to others around, you'll find that many of those hire outside to do their revaluations and interim year adjustments. And we do all the work internally with minimal consulting. Thank you.
Counsel Tran.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Wilson, what are we expecting in terms of legal costs and expenses that, that are going from $2,000 to a, a, a request of $15,000?
We budget that money every year in defense of values. So at, you know, after we set the tax rate and we set our values, we, you know, we may or may not get abatements. So that money is basically like an insurance for us, that if we have multiple abatements, that we have a, a fund to defend the values that we have. And it's like insurance, because if we don't spend it, we return it. And we've returned most of it every year, but in some years, we've actually used it and saved a lot of money. And I'll give you an example. One year, we had a taxpayer who, we valued their property at $12 million, and they filed for an abatement. And they said it was worth $4 million. So without this money, we, the board would be tempted to negotiate a settlement, landing somewhere in the middle. So a reduction in $4 million in value. But because we had money to spend to defend that value, we stood on our value, took it all the way to the Pelo Tax Board, won the case, the, the value stayed at $12 million. So if you do the math, $4 million would have been, an abatement of $4 million would have been about $100,000. So this $10,000 helped us keep $100,000.
What's, what's the average number of abatements you receive on an annual basis?
I think there's a graph in here for that. Let me just look at it real quick. The average is probably about 100 per year.
And what's the percentage rate of success for the abatements?
Minimal. I think this year, we probably had about 100 abatements, if you include some multi, you know, people who file on everything they own. And I think we probably give, give about 20 abatements, so.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Counselor Dean Tally.
Thank you. Mr. Wilson, were you the one managing Munus? I still am, yes, but currently, I am. Is there a reason why you manage Munus? And not, and not IT? Yeah, I think about 12 years ago, it was, that the, the assistant auditor had retired. He was managing Munus. And there was a feeling that someone with a financial background and an IT background, which I have, would do a good job managing that. In your opinion, should that be an assessors' part of his, his or her job, or should that be an IT function? Generally speaking, it would be an IT function. So my curiosity is, why isn't it? That's not for you to answer. Do you happen to, well? No, I think it will be in this budget. Okay. And I wish the mayor were here to answer this, but my concern is, is you have an organization who hasn't done Munus. Are they qualified and able, right from July 1st forward, to do Munus? Because you've been doing it for 12, for, for, for many years, and on July 1st, you're done. Is the transition going to happen smoothly? Or, again, unfortunately, you can't answer this. But my concern here is, there's going to be a disruption in operations with Munus, because you're taking someone who's seasoned at doing it, and I have my own personal reasons why he's doing it, and you're giving it to an organization that hasn't done it. So I'd like to have some understanding of that organization's capability in doing it, just so there's no disruptions in service.
I think, Counsel, that would be a discussion with the mayor and IT when they come before us, as part of the.
I will look forward to having that discussion. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments regarding Assessors' Office, and page 53? Counsel Kouschmarik.
I just noticed that you requested $22,000 for data collector, part-time. Looks like projected a $15,000 this year, and the mayor granted $15,000 for you. Can you just talk about, you know, what you were hoping to achieve? I take it it's the same person looking to give them more hours, correct?
Well, actually, this looks a little convoluted, so let me go back to last year. Last year, we had budgeted $15,000 for the data, data collector, and $15,000 for contracted services. And I'm not sure if you were here, but about two months ago, I came and asked to move $7,000 from that contracted service to my part-time data collector. And the reason for that is because it's a bargain. We have an employee who's been working for the city for a long time, who retired, came back, we're paying him about one-half of what I was paying a contractor. So when I prepared this budget, I requested the $22,000 to bring me back to where I was effectively last year, and didn't request the $15,000 in contracted services.
Okay.
So what happened was that $7,000 got cut and didn't get replaced in my contracted services. And so I, I live with that.
Do you feel that there's value that we'll lose by, by losing some of that contracted service time? Could there be potential revenue loss as a result of this?
We'll be, we'll be okay with that. We'll, we'll manage it with the budget as it's written.
I just, you know, I, I think when you opened up with, you know, this is, you know, kind of return on investment, so to speak, I, I think this is one of those great examples of, you know, you have great return on investment in your department. Looking for an extra $7,000, it would be great to, to see, you know, you granted, because particularly, I mean, the, the value for that individual and the experience that's brought to the table, the result of that individual, you know, it's, just such a great value that we're getting. It, it would be great to see their requested amount fulfilled, because I do question how much, you know, more revenue we might be able to bring in the result of, you know, as a result of some extra time and hours. Thank you.
I certainly appreciate, appreciate your comments. Thank you.
Any questions or comments regarding the Assessors', page 53? Thank you, Mr. Wilson.
Thank you.
Moving forward to Human Resources', page 39.
Good evening.
We have the mayor, we have Human Resources'. Human Resources', $93,794. Mr. Stevens, any comment or question?
Just do a comment. First of all, thank you, Mr. President, for changing the, my appearance to tonight and to 28. Thank you for that.
Grandchildren take precedent.
Just a, one of the, one of the big accomplishments I feel we had this year in HR, was working in conjunction with the Law Department. And we've settled eight of the nine contracts this year, and very reasonable cost of living raises. The unions were very, treated us very well. And I think over the year, over the years, we've, we've done very well for the unions, and they've done very well for us, particularly since, for the last six or seven years, where they knew that we were strapped for cash in the city. So we've, I appreciate all the hard work that they've done for us.
Questions or comments from the councilors? Counsel Boesman.
I noticed, Mr. Stevens, $4,253. Is that a pay raise? Is that usually an average pay, pay raise for the Human Resources?
As you heard from Mr. Sarason earlier, that, that's a, that's a step raise and a 1% cost of living raise.
And then we also give a longevity's pay raise?
There's, I have longevity also, yes.
My second question for you. How would you find, being a human service, in the Human Service Resources, how is the morale of the people in the office of City Hall?
I find the, I'm working on morale in City Hall, at City Hall, as a, as a matter of fact. I'm trying to improve our customer service with customers, and internal and external customers currently. Matter of fact, I've talked to several, several groups, several companies, consultant firms to, to look into what it would cost to actually have them come in and, and work with us. I found the morale probably okay.
Just okay?
Yeah. I don't think it, I, I would not, I would, I wouldn't compare, I wouldn't say it's great, but I think it's okay, and, and we're working on it.
Now, as a human resource, you guys don't have like a team meeting? So, so Paul Boesman comes to work, he can air out his differences and blow steam, and then feel better about it, and do a better work? There's none of that?
I'm, I am the team. Only have one employee, and that would be myself. And I, and I have an open-door policy. I get people in my door all the time. They want to talk about things, and I want to talk about things with them.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Stevens.
I would just like to comment that for the city of this size, and the number of employees that we have, to have a Human Resource Department of one person is just beyond me. So that what Mr. Stevens does, and, and he's pulled in, in many directions and to do many things, and I personally believe that he's often asked to do things that really don't fall within the Human Resources guidelines, which makes his job even that much more difficult. So I think we're, we're doing well for, for what we have with a one-man department.
Counselor Dean Tally.
On that, on that topic, you know, where I work, there's 130 people. And we have two full-time, two full-time IT professionals, I mean, IT, I'm sorry, HR professionals. That's for 130 people. How many employees outside of the schools are there in the city?
The, the, the ratio is not including 11 councilors. Okay. Because I don't get too many, I get some complaints from them, but not too many. The total of 348 to one.
348 employees that are on your jurisdiction. So in the private sector, I'm just using my own experience, there's a third of the amount of people, and there's double the amount of resources. So by that math, the city should probably have two, even three, full-time Human Resource professionals taking care of things. You see, there, there are areas of the city budget where you can make a very compelling case that we need to add resources to, based on purely the math and the logistics, like HR. And there are other areas that you don't need anybody. And as we go forward in these discussions, when I hear statistics like this, this is one reason of many why I continue to push for privatizing certain services. Because the money we save from doing that can go to things like this. No city or town in the country has a private HR firm, but they have private services in other areas for a reason. Because they divert that money they would have spent on that service that they don't have to spend on things like this. So if you take two full-time employees at a salary combined of around $150,000, and you remove those employees through privatization, that's $125,000 a year in pension liability we don't have to pay, which could go to hire one more HR person, two police officers, two firefighters, the list is endless. But we don't do it, because we don't like to ruffle feathers here. That's not a comment to you. I'm just, this is a general comment, because I believe there should be three of you, not one. And the fact that there is only one is laughable. Thank you.
Counsel Clark.
Thank you, Mr. President. Bernie's also been extremely helpful in all the searches that we've done in the last couple of years. And there have been quite a few searches in the last few years. And I know the most recent one for the police chief, I certainly appreciate all the material and all the background that you were able to give us. And it's appreciated, and I don't think people see all that other stuff that you do. You said union contracts, are there two still out there now? Or one? One, and that's the police?
We have, this, this year, we settled eight contracts. We still have one police, police contract is still outstanding, we're still working with them. We also settled the, have a two-year agreement in conjunction with the City Treasurer. HR worked with the City Treasurer and settled a contract for, with the, with the PEC, the insurance arm of the, of our health insurance.
Yep.
And that, that was, that was, that particular negotiation was 17 unions. That included city and, and school unions, and it also included the retirees. And I can't say enough for Calvin Brooks. He, he just, he just did a great job.
Any other questions or comments regarding Human Resources', page 39? Thank you, Mr. Stevens.
Thank you very much.
Moving forward to the Law Department, page 42. Good evening, John.
Good evening, Counselor.
Mr. President.
Law Department, page 42, total of $260,150. Comments, gentlemen?
Well, if I might. Again, Mr. President and councilors, we have a, I believe is a level-funded budget for the Law Department. I would, if I could take the time, I would pass out a report. It was in the, the budget, there was, I think the, the mayor had included some description, but unfortunately, well, being a lawyer was rather verbose, and she wasn't able to put everything in there. So this was the, the full report.
Yeah, this is another task that doesn't fall under.
No, no. Yeah, and I guess.
Just taking my point, Bernie.
Segue into the fact that I think, for, for me at least, the most, the major accomplishment this past year was concluding the agreements with eight of the city's unions. We still have one that's outstanding, and we're hopeful that we might be able to resolve that before the end of the year. But it, so, so far, succeedingly, succeeding in settling that contract has eluded us. So I think the other big thing, really, that the Law Department has been very visibly involved with is code enforcement. And, you know, Mark has performed, I think, well, the lion's share, much more than the lion's share dealing with that. I've, I've had a couple matters that I've taken in, covering, really essentially covering for Mark. But he has, I think, done a great job in working with the ICE Committee and advancing cases that involve the code enforcement, and, including even receiverships. So just as a, a bit of a preview, I, I loathe to report that this year, we may end up actually going over some of our projections for the past year. And that has to do with particularly the, the labor supplement. We, I think that putting forward $50,000 is still a reasonable amount, but this year, we did have, apart from the, the collective bargaining, which I think I largely handled together with Bernie, and I, I can't say enough about Bernie's work on that. He really worked hard getting those contracts resolved. We've had a, I think, a bit of a spike in the number of grievances and kind of somewhat disciplinary matters. And so that has perforce required some reference to Labor Council for their assistance in, in what can be. what can be fairly intricate matters sometimes, that you want to make sure that you're providing the correct advice. So it isn't going to be an awful lot, but at this point, I'm projecting probably about $10,000. And in terms of damages to persons and property, unfortunately, we did have one particular matter that, we're a little bit over on that too, due to a deductible. Generally, what we use the damages to persons and property for really isn't, it used, originally it was for paying damages and we had a claims committee and people filed their claims and the claims committee usually made up of members of, I think, of the council and the city solicitor would make a decision about whether or not to pay a damage claim. We do have insurance now, but we also, with our insurance, we do have deductibles that we have to pay. Some departments basically have budgeted for that or have funds in their department, such as wastewater, that they can pay the deductible. Other departments, such as the police department, don't really have that budgeted. So we typically, our first resort is to this line item in the law department. And unfortunately, I think this year we're going to be going over a little bit on that because of a complaint against the city for litigation. But also, we have a deductible for the damage to the senior center this past winter that at this point, I don't believe the senior center has funds for the deductible. There's considerable amount of damage to the roof, which is covered by our insurance, but we will have to come up with a deductible for that. So other than that, I don't know, the council has other questions?
Counselor Green.
I just have a funny, quirky little question under legal cost and expense for the law department. It's only $1,500, but I'm just curious on what that would be.
That largely, counselor, would be things such as filing fees.
Okay.
Basically.
I can, I can answer it. For instance, if we do a.
Service.
A receivership, we have to get a title and then we have to go and have it served by sheriff. So if sometimes these mortgage companies are out of state and we're subjected to whatever fees they charge, even though we try to find the lowest ones, I just served somebody in Rhode Island, $100 was the cheapest I could find. So that's where that money would be coming out of, out of that line item.
Thank you.
If I could just, John, under legal expenses, administrative support, this $24,000. And it's been here for a couple of years, it wasn't in '13. I just have a concern about that. Years ago, when you were the assistant and Mike was the city solicitor, you had, you both got your compensation, you both received compensation for your staff and for your cost in your office in order to do stuff for the city. And then at some point, the mayor combined those two, which gave both individuals a substantial, it was a raise, but it really wasn't a raise because you were getting, say, $45,000 in 12-5 for your staff and then they put it together and just gave you the 57-5. And then a couple of years ago, we've come back with that. So you got it on this end, lost it on the other end, and then they brought it back? Is that what that is?
I think the, if I, Mr. President, I think that the, I know this came up last year and I, what we had before, there was also, I believe, a separate line item, if I can go back to it, for code enforcement, special counsel. And we had roughly $20,000 that was budgeted back in fiscal 11 for that amount. And then we actually ended up only spending $15,000 in fiscal 12. At the time, Mike was doing the code enforcement in addition to his salary. And in order to do that, the whole expenses had been deleted, okay, for the, and I felt that it made more sense because we would, Mark and I would be doing the code enforcement as part of our salary. But that still, we're trying to restore the fact that we do have out-of-pocket expenses or expenses, which is allocated or provided for in the code, that we can get our secretarial, administrative, and office expenses basically overhead. And that had been deleted. So instead of allocating the, basically the $20,000 for code enforcement, which we would be doing through our salary, that money was transferred to, I think, reflect more appropriately the fact that we do have our expenses for our staff and our offices, which, you know, we, it's a small percentage, quite frankly, of what it costs to run our offices. But that is more applicable to the city's work that's being done for the city in that expense.
Thank you. Counselor Dean Tally.
I realize that only the mayor can make changes in how we perform legal services, but I just want the public to be aware of one, a few financial statistics. Number one, the city of Leominster spends every year $185,000 on legal services. That does not include liabilities. 185. We spend on average 260, and that doesn't include liabilities. Number two, the cities and towns around us that have private legal services, Lancaster, Leominster, Lunenburg, Northborough, Royalston, Sterling, Sturbridge, Sutton, Upton, Warren, Webster, Westboylston, Westminster, Winchton, and about 100 others, somehow, some way, they get their legal services done. Yet, for the last seven and a half years, I've been told, if we do that, oh, we're not going to be able to take care of our legal services. One final statistic, because I'm not going to make any cuts this year because I know it's not going to pass, and I know the mayor's not going to listen, but these are the expenses that those cities and towns don't spend, even if they were to spend more than 260 a year. At 50% of what you make in salary for a pension, for assuming the life of 30 years, for two people, $2.4 million. That's at 50%. If it was 80, $3.7 million. None of those cities and towns pay any of that. So when I sit here and I hear we get the best bang for our buck, this is costing us potentially $3 to $4 million for the next 30 years. Maybe we'll have this discussion again next year, I don't know, but I know it's not going to go anywhere this year, but $3.7 million, and none of those other communities pay a dime. The same goes for the other areas. I've earmarked for privatization because there are so many communities who do it. I'm not trying to pick on these departments. These are departments where services are privatized, and that is a big reason why. It's also a big reason why these cities and towns don't have $200 million in unfunded liabilities like we do. Because we continue to choose to spend millions on benefits. And I might want to add one more thing, very important. That 2.4 million at 50% or 3.7 at 80%, that doesn't include healthcare. So actually, I just opened the Pandora's box even more. Doing what we're doing right now in the city is costing us maybe as much as $5 to $6 million when you add health insurance. Financially, and this is all it's about for me, financially, this makes absolutely no sense. So if I hear anybody in this room down the road talk about how we have a problem with our liabilities, can we for once put our money where our mouth is and make a change? It's not going to fix everything, but it's $5 million for two people. Thank you.
Counselor Boesman.
John, one final question here. It says here on the legal labor, city solicitor, can you repeat that again, labor supplement? We have $50,000.
Right.
Is that additional pay?
No, no, that is for basically special counsel. We have Deutsch Williams, the attorney that most like, most often helps us with particular legal matters dealing with labor law, is Brian Magna. So that's labor law. That deals with, when we have issues that come up with grievances. We have, we have used Brian's assistance in trying to settle the police contract because that is something that went down to the joint labor management committee. And I felt that going in there, we could use his experience dealing with that. And, you know, there's a myriad of, quite frankly, labor issues that come up. You know, he's, I think, Bernie would attest the fact, there are times when there are human resource labor issues that, you know, he needs to refer that to Brian and that's where that money is for.
We have a Netflix problem with labor, $50,000? I mean, how many cases is that a year?
I can only tell you, counselor, on an hourly basis, they charge $200 an hour.
Holy, man.
And they, and I think they are worth that, but they're, you know, roughly, we've been able to manage, you know, monthly with roughly a bill that runs around $5,000 on average a month. As I mentioned earlier, we've had a bit of a spike in some grievances in the past couple months. And one matter particularly is potentially going into arbitration. I won't want to get into the details of the case, but it's a matter which I don't think is very meritorious, but the person appeals it and it goes through the process and it just seems to make more sense to have them assist us with that.
Okay. That's what I want to know. Thank you.
Counselor Clark.
Thank you, Mr. President. Are we still at the point of our, trying to think of the best way, are school lawyers separate from you guys? I mean, I bring it up every year and I always wonder if we're going to have a law department, you know, shouldn't the guys in school education be involved with that and have, you know, three? Three heads are better than one, I guess? I don't know, but they've got, well, they've got more than one lawyer, don't they?
The school department does have an attorney that advises them separately with respect to labor manage, matters, you know, the collective bargaining with the unions there. I handle the workers' comp cases for the school department.
Okay.
So that's in-house.
Is that new?
No, no. One of the first charges I had as assistant city solicitor in '93 was to handle workers' comp matters for the city. Mayor Bean at the time, that was one of the things that they wanted me to deal with. So I've been doing that. And some communities have insurance. They have insurance for all of it. We are self-insured for our workers' comp. And we do have a claims administrator that manages the, making sure the injured employee gets to the doctors and has, you know, medical expenses covered. But when we have a dispute, that comes back to me. And we do have actually a number of matters that are pending with the school department currently. But, yeah, I can't really speak to that, all of that, Counselor Clark, but I do know that they do have counsel.
Because we've always talked about combining communications with fire and police, you know, and then there's this where we, you know, I'm sure you must collaborate on them at some rate with.
With respect to workers' comp, I mean, with workers' comp and general matters for the school department.
Yeah.
And maybe contractual matters, purchasing matters, you know.
Will that go to our net spending?
Uh, good question. I don't, I don't know if that would, could be applied, net spending. I don't know.
Your time?
Yeah.
That is a good question and we need to, we need to check on that.
Well, I'm done for the night. That's my good question.
Thank you.
All right.
For the night, for the hearings.
Yeah.
Counselor Boesman.
You're talking about working the comp. Do we have any people out on working this comp? Not knowing names, but do we have any in the city on?
Oh, yeah.
We do. Do we bring them back and put them on light duty?
Unfortunately, I believe all of our collective bargaining agreements still have a provision that there's no light duty.
No light duty?
And so it's.
Like just sitting there and answering the phone or going down to City Hall, sitting right there and direct the people that this is the building, this is the water, this is where you pay your tax?
It's something that would, would be nice to be able to negotiate, but we have not been able to do that. And I don't know if Bernie can speak to that to some degree because.
You have to negotiate that with yourself insured?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And.
Because when I worked at GE, there was no negotiation. If they tell you, you're coming back, you're going to sit there and do light duty and do nothing all day, that's what you did.
I mean.
You didn't have the same union. Simple as that. These unions have negotiated, counsel.
It's part of the agreement. You can't bring them back.
All right. That's all I want to know. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Did you say you can't take them out? You can't, you said you can't bring them back?
Go ahead. I think Mike was saying you can't unilaterally take that out of the contract.
Oh, right. Of course. I mean, once we give it to them, we're never getting rid of it. So thank you to whoever gave it to them from how many years ago.
Any other questions or comments for legal on page 42? Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Counselor Tran.
Mr. President, I just want to bring to attention of the council. Page eight on the, in the budget. So here we are, another year, another budget, and once again, we're raising the property taxes to the maximum. If we keep on this path, we've had this discussion many times in the past, that we are going to be in trouble several years from now. We are going to flatline, also known as the tax levy ceiling. There's only two things that we can do. Either one is reduce the tax levy and rein in the spending, or two, increase our tax base and increase the commercial growth. Increasing our tax base is not going to happen overnight, but we can reduce the tax levy. And we need to, we need to do that. Many years from now, I'm not going to be sitting here and I'm not going to be telling the people that I told you so because we're going to be in trouble. So with that being said, I, Mr. President, I'm recommending that we reduce the tax levy by $114,950.
Thank you. Any other business? Counselor Dean Tally.
Just on that, it's important to understand that the budget as it's currently constituted is not structurally balanced, meaning we are still relying on one-time reserves to balance this, and we're relying on non-recurring revenues to balance this. So right off the bat, that's $700,000 from overlay surplus. That's money we don't have that we're dipping into the abatement pool. Okay? And we do it every year. Now, God forbid, there is a time where we need that $700,000 for actual abatements, that's not going to be there for balancing the budget, which is why we should never use it. So if we really wanted to balance the budget first before we talk about tax levy reductions, we'd have to reduce this budget by at least a million dollars. And to me, I don't, I'm not optimistic that'll happen, but the budget's not balanced, hasn't been as long as I've been here. And the revenues we've gained from all of the extra stuff, we're spending it. We're spending it. So par for the course, another year. Thank you.
Motion, second, to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? We're adjourned. Thank you, councilors.